Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. We are coming to you live from Zartman House inside of the Head of School office. My name is Doug Thornell. I'm from the fantastic class of 1995. And I'm joined by a very special guest, the Head of School, Brian Garman.
Good to see you, Doug.
As many of you know, Brian came back to Sidwell Friends School as Head of School in the beginning of 2015. Prior to that, he was Head of School at Wilmington Friends for eight years. And Brian has a long history here at Sidwell Friends School. Before Wilmington Friends, he was a history teacher here. He was the Chair of the History Department. He also ran the Summer Studies Program. He was Associate Head of School. And he was the upper school principal. So Brian, on behalf of everyone at the Sidwell Friends community, welcome back. And also, thank you for participating in the first ever Sidwell Friends online interactive Town Hall.
We're making history.
We are gonna make it.
That's right. It's great to be back. I've had a great five months. And everything I missed about this place is still intact, and it's just been wonderful to be here.
Great. So this is part of Brian's Room 212 tour. It's a tour that Brian's been on for several months now, where he's been crisscrossing the country, meeting with alumni and friends and former students. It's a way to welcome Brian back to the community and for him to reconnect with some old friends and some old students. Couple items before we get to the questions. We are gonna be taking questions live. So on your screen, if you're watching, you can type a question into the question box and hit, click "Ask a Question." You can also ask a question by emailing townhall@sidwell.edu. We will try to get to as many as we possibly can. We also had some questions that were submitted before today that we'll run through. So with that, let's get going. Brian, I'm gonna take the liberty of asking the first question. It's actually a combination of a question that I have and Michael Bacon from the class of 1984 has. And my question is, what does it mean to you to be back at Sidwell Friends? And Michael's question is, how has Sidwell Friends changed since you were last here?
Yeah. As I was saying, it's just great to be back. And one of the things that's been most rewarding has been to go across the country and see the alumni and to see students that I've taught lead their adult lives. And what is so extraordinary is listening to the consistency in how they describe the school. They always talk about the difference that faculty made in their lives. They talk about the impact that Quaker education had on them. And they always point to the importance of financial aid, providing financial aid to the spirit of the school, which I think really speaks to the depth of character of our students, but also to the way in which they absorb the values of the place. So, and I tell the students that, I see my former students, how much fun it is, how rewarding it is to see what they're doing with their lives. All of our alumni do such amazing things and truly let their lives speak. So that's been very rewarding. There certainly are parents, former parents, that I've had a chance to reconnect with, and former colleagues, which has been great fun. In terms of what's changed, the school, the spirit of the school, I think, is very similar to what it was when I left. It's a little larger than it was. The upper school has probably 30 or 40 more students in it than when I was here. The other divisions have remained mostly the same. The school is much more diverse than it was when I was here. I would say that when I left nine years ago, the percentage of students of color was somewhere between 25 and 30%, and now it's almost 50%. It's on the high 40s. And that's been wonderful. There were no, there was not an organization like the parents of Latino students. And that's a vibrant part of our community now, and that's really wonderful. The facilities are different. And Bruce Stewart did a remarkable voting. They're a little better. I don't know if you, you were an athlete. Do you remember that weight room that we used to have underneath?
Oh, yeah.
There's a closet lined with...
Bench presses.
Yes, exactly. So this wonderful athletic facility, the Meeting for Worship Room is really wonderful and was just certified Lead Platinum. So that's the second Platinum building we have attesting to the environmental mission of the school. The middle school is the other building. But that's just, there's something about the character of that room that changes Meeting for Worship, the quality of Meeting for Worship. And, you know, it was, we could have a good meeting in the gym before that, but it's much nicer to have it in that space. So those are two items that are particularly different. I think also, there are some curricular changes that I can talk about later. I think there's some people who want to talk about those, so maybe save that for later. But again, the spirit of the place feels very much like it did. People, and working with this latest group of seniors, which I only knew for five months, has, was a great experience for me because they, it felt like the kids I used to work with, in a very genuine way. And I'll never forget my first day on the job here, when two students came over from the senior class to see me, Jerome and Stephanie. And that just made a big impact on me, that they would take the time to do that. And it also spoke, I think, to the character of that class, just how friendly they are. So we had a wonderful graduation celebration a week ago today.
Last week.
Yep, yep. And unfortunately, it rained. But alumni will be happy to know that the class of 2015 still walked down the stairs behind Zartman House. That was very important to them. And actually, at reunion, we had a lot of alumni who wanted to retrace those steps down the stairwell. But we had two great commencement speakers, Elsa Walsh and Bob Woodward, who had a daughter in the class, Diana. And Elsa spoke very eloquently about the importance of kindness, that any regret that she had in her life, she said, had to do with a moment where she didn't embrace the opportunity to be kind. And that was, I thought, just really wonderful advice to give. And Bob, of course, spoke about the importance of being engaged in politics, being aware of politics, and being, you know, a very active citizen. So great, great remarks for a great class. And we'll hope next year's outside.
Whether permitting.
Right.
I wanna follow up on a topic you mentioned, diversity, because a number of questions that we received asked about the issue of diversity. Cal Hoffman from '76, Camilo Acosta, Simon Chabel from '97, Bruce Altavod. They all want to know what the school is doing to maintain its commitment to diversity, particularly regarding increasing Hispanic enrollment. Making Sidwell Friends more affordable to the middle class, and making it more accessible to different socioeconomic and regional groups.
Those are great questions. I actually saw Camilo when I was out in LA and had a chance to talk with him about this. Actually, Camilo was in San Francisco. But at any rate, you know, one of the things that's important in terms of diversifying the student body is to get a critical mass of diversity. And we've been able to work toward that, especially more recently, with Latino students. And the fact that we now have this vibrant parent organization has been very helpful to us because they're actually helping us recruit students, and that's, that's great. We have also really increased our investment in the diversity program here at Sidwell. We have just appointed a Director of Equity, Justice, and Community. And the goal of that, we had a quarter-time position that was an all-school diversity director. But what we want to do is really work toward investing in creating a very inclusive community, making sure all of our families feel welcome here, making sure that we are raising questions about social justice and equity, both within the community and outside of the community. And we have hired a great person named Philip McAdoo, who actually had a career on Broadway and a leading role in The Lion King, played junior varsity basketball at the University of North Carolina, and is just an extraordinarily personable guy who's coming in to start in July. We're also expanding positions in the admissions office to deepen our commitment to recruiting students from across the city. And we have what is, what we're calling an admissions outreach person, who is trying to go out in neighborhoods that are primarily underserved and finding students who would thrive at Sidwell Friends. So that's another important part of our strategy.
These are all new positions.
These are new positions, yeah, yeah. We actually received a grant from the E.E. Ford Foundation to help fund these positions.
That's great.
So, yeah, we're very happy about that. So that's one piece that is very important, or a way we're responding to the ongoing commitment that the school has had to diversity. And the fact that we have almost 50% students of color, to me, it's really, it's really exciting because we're talking about having a majority non-white nation by, what, 2040 is what the demographers are saying.
Not to mention being in a city that is...
Incredibly cosmopolitan, incredibly diverse. And it really gives us an opportunity to model what that society should look like. And I can't think of a better opportunity for a school to have that opportunity to teach kids about how to work in the future world, the country that we'll have. And it's so important to democracy, the health of democracy, I think, and so important to the mission of Quaker education.
That's great. So Joseph Shin from the class of 2005 wants to know about, what are the areas of improvement for the school to work on?
One thing that I would say to Joey, and this goes back to the previous question too, one of the things that we need to work on is growing the endowment, because that's something that will help make the school more affordable to middle-class families. So that picks up the last question also.
And how can our friends watching do that?
They could give to the endowment. Thanks for the setup. No, but that really, truly, I mean, I think that the world desperately needs Quaker education. And I think that we have a responsibility to make that education as accessible to people as we possibly can. And I've spoken before at some forums that, you know, our democracy is very bifurcated. It's hard to find consensus in the world. It's hard to find peace in the world. It's hard to find a place where people can reflect on matters in a serious way in the world. And Friends Education teaches kids to do that. And we need to, that, that kind of education has had such an impact on the lives of our alumni. And I think more broadly in the world, that I think that Sidwell Friends has to continue a deep commitment to make that education accessible to as many people as possible. And one of the things we want to focus on is making it accessible, not just in terms of tuition, but continuing to work on providing all the full range of services and opportunities to students who are on aid as those who are not receiving aid or benefit from. And another place that we want to do that is in providing funds for students to travel internationally. We think that's a great part of our program. It's a growing part of our program. And we want to be able to make that accessible to all students as well. So that's, that's a challenge for us. I think the other, the financial model of independent schools, of universities, is a challenging situation right now. This is nothing new. Everybody's talking about it. And I think the other challenge that a school like Sidwell has, given the level of success that we've enjoyed, you know, during, during our time, is that you don't want to fall victim to complacency. And so making sure that we're always growing, that we're looking at education in that deeply Quaker way of continuing revelation, that we can't sit still and we can't be static. Unfortunately, we have a faculty that always wants to learn. We cannot keep enough professional development funds for our faculty because they exhaust them all the time. And it's, when I think about what I enjoy about this place, it is that deep intellectual engagement of faculty and the entire community, and this, this desire to want to grow.
The faculty here was always very important to me when I was a student. And I know my classmates, we still have relationships with some of the teachers that taught us here. What are your thoughts on how you keep talent here and how do you attract talent?
Professional development is one way to do that, to provide generous funds. We have some, what are called the Venture Grant Funds, that provide up to $20,000 of money for summer grants. And these are for group projects. These are funded by an alumni family, very important to the health of the school and to the growth of our faculty. And there are other professional development opportunities, faculty travel grants. We saw recently a faculty member in the middle school talk about how important it was for him to be able to go to the coast of Greece and see where the odyssey took place, right? And how that re-energized his class. We've seen presentations from a lower school art teacher who talked about her travels across Europe and was able to show directly the kind of impact that had on her teaching. So those are, those are crucial to the retention and the recruitment of faculty. The other thing that we always have to keep our eye on, especially in a city that's as expensive, where the cost of living is as high as Washington, is the faculty salaries. And that's another reason to add to the endowment, so that we can continue to attract the very best faculty and to continue to pay them at the levels that they deserve to be paid. And there's no more crucial resource to the school than the faculty. And you can, the alumni will attest to that. Every, every conversation I have with alumni, that comes up.
Right. Lisa Harris-Moorehead, she's from the class of 1968. And she asks, how will you preserve students' rights to freely express themselves here at Sidwell Friends?
Voice is such an important part of Sidwell and such an important part of Quakerism. When you think about the, the structure of Quaker meeting, right? All voices are equal, and you have a responsibility to make your voice feel heard. So we encourage that voice here at the school. We want people to let their lives speak in their actions. There are all kinds of publications where students are able to speak out. The Horizon is one place where they express that voice. We have a new magazine, actually, that focuses on issues of diversity at the school. I just have on my desk here the latest edition of Quarterly, which is still thriving. And if you were to take at the end of the year, the extraordinary art displays, art installations in the, in the new building, and you can see the seriousness and the playfulness, and in some cases, the political import and impact with which our students speak. And even...
Is it harder in the social media age that we're in, where a lot of the, a lot of the students have Instagram, they may have Twitter, and that, you know, the...
Yeah. That can be difficult. I mean, and I think, I think it's difficult in the social dynamic, particularly in middle school, that can become a problem, where bullying has kind of migrated into the digital space. And so we do spend time talking with families about that, how to regulate that kind of conversation with their kids. Sometimes we get pulled into that because it has an impact on the way in which a child is learning in school. And what I always say is that parents really need to try to understand the digital world that their kids are living in, and that they ought to experiment with some of these digital platforms. Get an Instagram account, get a Twitter account, look at Tumblr, and know where your kids could be living. And I think, I think we have a responsibility as educators to be familiar with those kind of platforms. But as parents, and I feel this very strongly as a parent myself, that I need to know that too. I need to know where my kids might be living digitally.
Right. So you posed a query before this, before the Town Hall, and it was, what essential values and components of the Sidwell Friends experience should a Head of School protect?
Yeah.
So I want you to answer your own...
It's special. You want me to answer?
Yeah.
I think that, you know, it's interesting. I was talking to faculty at the end of the year and was saying that there was a reason why Jim Zug, who wrote the history of Sidwell School, Sidwell Friends School, the latest history, entitled his book The Long Conversation. And I think there is always a conversation about what Sidwell is and what it should be about. But at the heart of that conversation, there are certain things I think that you need to protect. One is the intense climate of intellectual inquiry, right? That's, that's absolutely central to what this school is about. That's why it is a conversation, because this is a place where people have great ideas, there's great talent, and there's something about what's forged in those conversations and the heat of those conversations, in many cases, that makes this place very special. I think too, there is the connection of that intense intellectual life with the spirit of Quakerism that makes this place even, even more, so unique, especially in the landscape of schools in Washington. That commitment to let your life speak, that commitment to using your talents to have an impact on the world.
Tell us a little bit, let your life speak. You use that term a lot of times. For folks who aren't familiar with it, there's actually a day where there is a Let Your Life Speak session, where past Sidwell Friends students come to the school and talk about what they're doing with their careers.
Yeah, exactly. And the Let Your Life Speak quote comes from George Fox, the founder of Quakerism, who always was very clear that what you do is more important than what you say, right? How you, how you live your life is more important. And we've had students, alumni, come back at Founder's Day this year. We had about 20 alumni come back at their own expense and speak about what they're doing with their lives. And maybe somebody who's doing, somebody who was working on an organic farm at Yale, someone who's in the public defender's office, someone who's doing all kinds of work to protect the environment, someone who was actually featured, doing a lot of mountain climbing and echo awareness work. And so they come to provide an example to our students on Founder's Day. But there's so many ways to give back. And we, I've had a conversation with an alum recently about this, that she said, well, does Quakerism allow for our alumni to succeed in more conventional paths, such as the law? Or, and she was especially interested in business. And one of the things that has been written out of the history of Quakerism, Quakerism is that Quakers were very successful in business and brought a particular ethics to bear on the relationships that they had in their businesses. So people would be surprised to know that Macy's were Quakers, that Joseph Wharton, after whom Wharton Business School, his name, was a Quaker, Clark Shoes, Barclays Bank, Lloyd of London, Cadbury's. And we're hoping actually to organize a conversation about this and to have our alumni who are, who have been successful in business and social entrepreneurs to come into the school and have a conference about this. And we're looking forward to that in the future too. So another way to let your life speak in how you interact with people in your business and on, in your everyday life, and how, especially those Quakers who were successful in business, were also major philanthropists, who gave their excess earnings to social causes.
We had a, close to a dozen people ask a version of this, this question, which is, are, are students able, and you touched on it briefly in answer, but are students able to communicate the basic Quaker testimonies and values after they graduate?
Somebody asked me that question recently at a parent meeting, you know, how, to what extent are they really well-versed in Quaker tenets? And I think that, for me, it has to, my gauge of it has a lot to do with the Let Your Life Speak quote from George Fox. I think that if you look at the senior class, for example, and the relationships that they have with one another, if you look at how our students treat one another, if you look at how they respond to poignant moments in the life of the school with silence, you can see that Quakerism is alive and well. I gave the example recently at a parent meeting, and he asked me, how do you know it works? And I spoke about one of the most powerful moments in my life, actually, which happened when Tyler Roush was killed in a car accident the day before school began, when I was upper school head. And, you know, nobody knew what to do because we were so stricken with grief. Everybody came to the campus, and we just opened the meeting room and sat there, and no one said anything for an hour. And I remember the first day of school, which was the next day, and we, you know, as you probably recall, that that first day always had, always began with a meeting for worship. And again, in that hour, no one spoke. It was just, but there was a real intense feeling of community and just being together, a need to be together. And then a regularly scheduled meeting on Thursday took place, which was an hour and a half celebration of Tyler's life, where people couldn't stop speaking. And it was just so poignant to see how the community pulled together at that moment, and how they knew how to use that space of Meeting for Worship to deepen the strength of the community and to process something that was so deep and profound and sad. So I think, and I think people carry that with them when they leave. Like, you know, it's so often, we talk to our alumni who, when they first get to college, or maybe not when they first get there, but within a couple of months, are looking for a Quaker meeting, because they miss that experience in some sense. So I do think that part of the school is very vibrant, very vital, and is meaningful to our alumni.
So classmates Mary Ann McGrell from class of '76, and then Cal Hoffman, both asked about curriculum. They want to know, how does the curriculum engage each student's process of inquiry and learning? And are there any plans for changes in or evaluation of the curriculum?
Well, one of the things that we're doing this coming year is to start what's called the self-study. So we are accredited, or accredited by the Association of Independent Maryland Schools. And we study the curriculum, take a year-long process to study the curriculum, and then there's a visiting team that comes and reads our report and then makes recommendations moving forward. So there'll be some conversation about the curriculum there. But there's been, again, something that's changed since I've been here, some really significant innovation in the curriculum, some interdisciplinary work that I find very exciting. I watched the sixth grade team in the middle school work through this amazing project this year, where the, the goal was to have students design a sustainable house, a home in various regions of the country. So maybe one group would have to design it in a desert setting, another in a mountain setting, you know, another in an urban setting. And it was very interdisciplinary. They had to build models, they had to assess, you know, heat transfer index indices and, you know, very technical, scientific information, and then present their design to a panel at the end of that process. And it was really, I mean, this, this movement in education toward actually solving practical problems, I think, is a good one, and something that has been embraced more here recently than it was when I was here last time. The other thing, a couple of other programs that are really amazing is we are sending 12 students right now, they left on Wednesday, to Rwanda on a four-credit class. So they will receive academic credit there, they will be there for four weeks. It's not tourism, right? It's, they're actually doing a lot of reading about the country, they're reading about its political infrastructure, they're studying the landscape, and they have to produce real meaningful projects about the trip. We're doing the same to Uruguay.
Are they juniors?
These are, these are students who are getting really credit for a sophomore-level history class. They're rising to the junior year next year. We have also the Uruguay program, and we have 12 students, 12 Sidwell students, who went to the China Field Semester, which was the second semester of this past year. And they are studying in Yunnan Province, a rural area of China, apprenticing themselves to traditional tradespeople in China, learning about the belief systems in China, and also learning about the landscape and the environment of China as well. So we're really modeling a whole different way of learning in that, in that setting that's not textbook-driven. One of the most fascinating things that I've seen this year had to do with a collaboration that was taking place with our engineering class. So we now have an engineering class and design class along with our African history class. So the two classes came together near the end of the year. The African history class was talking about the African diaspora, and Shields Sundberg, who was the teacher who's taking the students to Rwanda. Shields has long had a relationship with a village in Haiti. And one of the challenges they have in this village is sustaining their bee population, because when they extract the honey from the hives, they don't have honey extractors like beekeepers have here in the States. And so what happens is the base of the hive is destroyed, and the bees dissipate, and they've got to rebuild the hive from the ground up. And so, bringing these two classes together, Shields has asked the engineering class and the history class to work on designing a honey extractor from, made of materials that are readily available in Haiti. And so they had, you know, they, she had somebody bring in some honey extractors so that they could see how these things work. And it was so much fun to sit in that classroom and watch the students just take over the classroom and start drawing, you know, designs for a honey extractor on, on the whiteboard. And they're actually going, they've, they've made some prototypes of these extractors, and Shields is hoping actually to take them to Haiti next spring break, when she's planning to take a group of students there. So really, you know, these interdisciplinary projects guided toward solving real-world problems is a really interesting move in education and one that I think fits very well with the mission of Sidwell Friends School.
I always thought Sidwell was always, when I was there, one step ahead of every other school in terms of the types of classes you could take. And it seems that...
And the electives, yeah. And I think we still are, yeah.
It seems like, a class like that, I mean, where else, in bringing those two classes together for something so unique?
Yeah, and you got, again, you gotta take the hat off to the teachers on that, for doing that. And the kids too are willing to take those risks and embrace that also, which is what you want to see. You know, and we're still doing all the terrific things that, you know, we've been doing for years in terms of teaching great math skills and science skills and reading, writing, you know, our kids write, write incredibly well. And, you know, it's interesting, when I was out in San Francisco seeing alumni, there was, I met one of my former students, Bron Kane, who had founded a... was, I met one of my former students, Bron Kane, who had founded a company to sell tech companies. So, really, what he does is, once they want to sell themselves, you know, he's running a soup-to-nuts services for them. And I said to him, "How did you come up with this idea?" And he said, "Well, Sidwell Friends School." And it was because of the, in his estimation, the critical thinking skills that he had learned here, and the ability to see possibilities where they don't necessarily exist. And, you know, that kind of thought, that kind of energy is such an important part of this place.
Right. Yeah, and it's something, back to the previous question about, you know, that how does a Quaker education serve you in the future?
Yeah.
And it's one of the, I have found one of the most important ways.
Yeah.
So, we've got a couple of questions from Nora Cameron. She's a parent of Alexander's Class of '24, and then a parent of an alumni, Claire Levy. They, it gets into the issue of workload, which I think the school, I remember when I was here-
Did you have to work?
Unfortunately, I couldn't find anyone to do my work. But the, it's an intense school.
Yeah, it is.
It's a, it's a, people, I think kids oftentimes feel like that, you know, there's just not enough date, number, not enough hours in the day to get the work done. But their question is, "How do we keep the school experience rich and rigorous without making the work level in the upper grades too crushing that kids don't have a chance to explore other, you know, other experiences that they're, that they're interested in?"
It's a really interesting question. I think there's a lot of sides to this question. You know, one is, talking to some alumni about it, they've really come to appreciate the, what you might call the intensity of the experience. They said, "You know, I felt so prepared when I was at college." They felt so prepared for their work. And they've actually identified the rigor as being important. I think also, you know, there's a difference between rigor and workload, right? You can be, you can, you can think very rigorously about material without having to do volumes of it, right? So, I think that's one thing that we need to be cognizant of. I think the other thing that is important around this question is cultural shifts that have taken place since you and I were in high school, let's say. You know, we weren't, you and I were not as heavily scheduled in our lives. We didn't have, at least I didn't have, such regularly scheduled programs where I was playing, you know, baseball here and playing piano here and getting my SAT coaching here, right? And so, when we think about workload, I think we do have to think about setting reasonable boundaries in our lives, both on the school side, but also on the student side. I know that I have to make choices about how much I can do in any, at any given time. I know that I can serve on two other boards, but, you know, that's my limit. Because if I try to do more than that, something is compromised. It may be my family life, it may be my work life here. And so, I think that one of the things that Sidwell has always tried to encourage students to do, and with varying degrees of success, is to make those choices. And we do need to teach kids to make those choices sooner rather than later. You can't do it all. And there's also, you know, it's funny that you mentioned this, and it's a little bit different context. I'm thinking back to graduate school now, and a professor who used to have a performance syllabus, and there was so much reading, right? You know, it's like, I don't know, 1,500 pages a week or something like. And he'd say, "I know there's too much reading. Figure out how to do it." Right? And when he said that, he didn't expect us to read every page, right? There's something like that. So, if we give the work, we also need to teach the kids how to make those selections about, you know, how to, how to get through the work efficiently.
Right. I thought one of the, one of my most, one of my most favorite teachers at Sidwell, who recently passed away, Neil-
Neil, yeah.
Great guy.
Yeah.
And the way he would conduct his class, I mean, you almost felt like you were in a, you know, it was kind of like a law class-
Yeah, yeah.
Where, you know, you read the section, and we might spend 20 minutes on just a couple of pages-
Yeah.
Just talking through-
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, what does this mean?
Yeah.
You know, and I felt like, and that's, I think, an example, you know, it's not a lot of workload, but the rigor of what we're thinking about.
The rigor of the analysis.
Right, exactly. And I think, back to your point about critical analysis, I mean, you really did get under the sheets in terms of, what was this author talking about? How did it play in the context of times? And, you know, I mean, I think Neil made, me and I know my friends, ready for college in terms of the sorts of advanced classes that we took in college, so-
The words mattered, right? He taught you that.
Every word mattered.
Right, and there was so much pressure on certain words, especially in poetry, that, you know, you needed, that you needed to reckon with it. And Neil had a way of being sure that you reckon with, with the words, with the content, and with the larger philosophical implications.
Right. So, tell me, what does the sports experience here at Sidwell mean to you, and what do you think it means to the larger Sidwell community?
Well, I think it means a lot. Athletics are an important part of my life. I think I told you this in another conversation, that, you know, my favorite high school teacher was my baseball coach, and I learned a great deal from him. And my grandfather was a wonderful baseball coach, too, and I think that's why I became interested in teaching. And I think you can learn tremendous things on the athletic field that you can't elsewhere. And a lot of that has to do with character, a lot of that has to do with the sense of being part of the community. A lot of that has to do with eliciting what is best in yourself in a different kind of context, but one that can carry over to your career or to the work that you do in academics. I think it is also important, an important realm for self-expression, to go back to another question that was asked earlier, that kids express their talents in different ways, and it's important to value all of the outlets, all of the talents that they have. And athletics is a place where certain students can do that. I think it creates a tremendous sense of, can create a tremendous sense of school pride and spirit, and I think that it's something that's very important to our alumni. The board has reaffirmed, I think, our commitment to athletic excellence here at the school, one that takes place in the context of academic excellence. And I've been talking about this a little bit because the board just issued its Athletic Task Force report. And I'd encourage people to go to the website to look at that philosophy, and they say, it actually says that we encourage athletic excellence and academic excellence. In terms of, and what I've been doing is talking about Sidwell's athletic program, really in the context of the NSCAC schools, you know, so Williams, Amherst, Hamilton, schools that have, they want an outstanding athletic experience for their students. But they're going to do it within this context of academic excellence. I think that's our, our peer group in a way in college. And I think that the most important thing in having a good athletic experience for our kids is the important thing, same thing as having an outstanding academic experience, is that people matter. And, you know, our coaches do, are so important in, in making sure that the kids have a great experience and grow. It's not just about winning, it's about how they, they grow as human beings in that process. So, I think it matters a great deal.
So, we only have a few more minutes, so if you, if anyone has any questions, now's the time to type them in or email them. We're going to do a little mini lightning round here.
Okay.
Katrina Seffes is a parent of Chancellor, who's Class of 2018, and she asks, "Is there anything that you will take from Wilmington Friends and bring to and implement here at Sidwell Friends?"
And it's interesting, Wilmington Friends was an international baccalaureate school, and so, that was a different kind of program. There are certain aspects that I would bring from Wilmington Friends, but since this is a lightning round, I would say one thing, and that is, I love what it does for its Martin Luther King Day celebration.
Great. Neville Waters has a question, "Will you bring back Charlie's Special?"
I want to know what Charlie's Special is, and once I find out, I think I want to bring it back, because I like the idea of Charlie's Special. The food is so incredible here now. You talk about another change, that's it also. And so, we have, the specials now tend to be, you know, foods from around the world. And so, especially in the lower school, the food becomes part of the education program.
I don't know if we, I think we've kind of touched on this, but the greatest challenge facing Sidwell Friends in the future?
I think part of that is, has to do with all schools finding, you know, the right financial model for the schools. And I think that another part of that question was, what is a challenge for me in that? And I think that, you know, part of the challenge for me is always to keep the conversation going, the long conversation, and being present and listening and trying to discern the right path forward for the school amidst the very talented and intense voices we sometimes have.
You mentioned that Bob Woodward-
Yeah.
-spoke at graduation. Kathy Webb, who's the Class of '76, asked that Bob Woodward talked about the importance of politics and politicians in our lives, yet Quaker models of governance seem different than those of our current political system. Are there opportunities for Sidwell Friends students to gain a practical experience in politics through the student government here or through other opportunities at the school?
There are, and, you know, we'd like, we want our kids to be engaged. I love that word, engaged, engagement. We want them to be politically engaged. And I think that's what Bob was trying to get them to see, that it, that, you know, he was saying, the people who hold political office matter, their views matter. You need to listen, and you need to become engaged. And if you don't like what they're doing, you need to do something to change it. That's a very Quaker impulse. And I do think, Kathy's question is a good one, I think also that our political system can benefit from people who have had Quaker educations, again, because I find just, the system is just too polarized. The conversation is too polarized. We need some people who are going to try to bring, to search for the truth wherever, wherever it is, and to have the courage to do that, and to try to bring this very polarized discourse together.
Tell me, what are you looking forward to in 2016 or next school year?
I'm looking forward to being here for an entire year. You know, getting into the rhythm of the year from the very beginning is important. I'm hoping to be able to spend some more time with students, which is really always the best part of the job, and spending some more time in classrooms. I love doing that. I think we'll have, you know, plenty of challenges, plenty of ideas coming forward in the next couple of years, but, you know, it was funny, at the end of the year this year, I said, "Look, I'm not tired, I'm energized. I don't feel tired like I often do at the end of the year." Part of it is a change, part of it's just that I'm back here, and there's so many great things and so many possibilities.
And you've been on-ragged here through this-
They run me around a little bit.
Room 212 tour, and you've got one more stop.
Jackson Hole. Somebody's got to go.
Promote that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if you're in Jackson Hole, let me know. I'll be happy to see you out there.
It's in August?
Yeah, it's the first week of August, and, you know, just in New York on Monday, and, but it's been so energizing to see people that care about the school so much. It's great to be part of that kind of community.
And you can learn more about the Room 212 tour at sidwell.edu/townhall, I'm sorry. You can learn more about the Room 212 tour, sorry, it's at sidwell.edu, and then there's a button there that you can learn more about Brian's tour there. We are at the end of our session here. Brian, I want to thank you so much.
Thanks, Doug. Good to see you all, yes. Yeah, I appreciate it, too.
And I know everyone who was watching appreciates it.
Thanks for coming, everyone.
And there's going to be a form questionnaire that we're asking folks to fill out at the end of this, so hopefully you can give your feedback to this. This, again, was our first online interactive town hall that we've had. I think we had close to 100 people, so we're really, you know, it was a real good experience, I think, for the school. Hopefully, we'll do it again. And you can, as I said, learn about the, about the 212 tour on sidwell.edu, but you can also watch a replay of this, of this, of Brian's interview, probably posted in the next day or two. So, keep an eye out for that, and I want to thank all of you for participating, and go Quakers, right?
Go Quakers. Thanks.
Yeah.
Good job. We out.